It's five o'clock, we're going to call to order.
Come on, it's five.
Thank you. And welcome to Channel 32. And Mr.
C. Baum.
C. Baum, Paul, our Temple Star. Thank you for being here, both of you. We have our opening prayers myself today. Dear Father in heaven, we come before the Lord this time in thanksgiving for those that have given us, and may they give us the wisdom needed to be able to deal with down affairs and to be able to do the best we can collectively. May we reach consensus on the items on the table and be able to move along with respect for each other and still be able to have our voices heard. I will pray for this thing, only in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
All right, we need to add some items to the agenda. If you see on your desk, you have a request from Alan Burton, and we're going to put it under seven F. And there is another item, we will put under seven G. It will be an interagency request. So we do not have a delegation today. We need to adopt the agenda as proposed and amended. Counselor Barnes is putting motion forward. All in favor? Thank you. We have the minutes under five of a regular council meeting of January the 28th, 2014. I need a motion to adopt the minutes as presented. We have a little bit of a problem now. Counselor Pivoy is making the motion to adopt the agenda. Graham, are you fine? Thank you. All right. Any question regarding?
We already have a seven G on here on the additions. Is that what this means?
This is the part where you're talking about.
We're talking. Any other questions? Sing none. We shall approve the minutes as given to us. All in favor? Thank you. So it was Counselor Pivoy who made the motion. All right, we're moving along very well. There is under business arising, I want you to go back to the minutes. I need you to look on the MGA review. We had decided. We had decided on the MGA that we would reassess the registration for the AUMA, for the government MGA review. And I need to have your opinion regarding this matter because administration needs to register with us for that meeting, which would take place February the 28th, if I remember right.
Right.
So, go ahead, tell me, do you feel that we should all go to that government review, or do we send myself and Counselor? What is your opinion?
If I recall, I recall the last meeting, we were talking about that we were going to have two different viewpoints on this MGA.
The first one was the AUMA.
Yeah, and then their government was going to present their side, and I think it's important that we all hear what their interpretation is going to be. That's my view.
All right. Anybody else would like to? Counselor Pivoy, what's your opinion?
Well, I understood from the AUMA representatives as they were discussing that the initiatives we discussed there were something they wanted us to show support of at the government one. So I don't know if that means appearing en masse or.
Okay. That's a good take. Counselor Banbury?
What kind of money does it cost for registration?
There was no fee for the registration. Just the per diem.
Yeah.
Well, I think that's relatively cheap when you consider that we need that input on the MGA.
Okay. Counselor, about this?
I would go along with that same idea. I think it's a good idea for us to be there.
Okay. Counselor Creed?
We definitely need to be at the table, and if all of us being there is going to be a stronger show, then that's better.
I agree with all of you said. So maybe we would direct administration to register.
You are all registered.
All right, so we will keep our registration. The only one that we do not have a consensus from is Counselor Edman, so maybe administration can contact him to make sure he's coming.
That's at the same place?
Yes.
Yes, it will be the same place. It's the Last Bridge Lodge.
But it starts at 10:00 a.m.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right. So this item is taken care of. Thank you. Regarding just the same agenda, I just want to let you know that we had a meeting with the RCMP, but we will have a report, and I will write the report, and it will be distributed to you in your report packages at the end of, at the beginning of the month.
For the AdOp committee?
For the AdOp committee. I will do that for the group. All right. We need to go under seven A, CCW recommendations. If you recall, we had two policies that were recommended to be brought forward to this meeting. The first one is a policy called P38-1 on professional development fund for counselors. It was a way to readjust the amount of per counselor, per term regarding education. It was $2,000.
The reason for that varies from the three-year to the four-year term.
Correct. The correction was because of the length of time. So I need a motion put forward.
I'll do that.
Counselor Banbury, put forward a motion to accept the policy, P38-1, professional development fund for counselors.
Extended to the four-year term.
Any questions? None? Sing none. Or for vote, all in favor? Thank you.
I just, for the benefit of the newspaper, we've upped the amount from $1,500 to $2,000 for professional development for the council members.
Correct. It was $500 per year. Over four years, represent $2,000 per year.
Mayor, we need to explain that the money is there, but so often, it is never totally used, right?
Quite frequently, it isn't, yes.
Yeah. It is there for your own personal development, to take courses with AUMA or other seminars that are offered from time to time. Seven A, two, policy B5. It was regarding bicycles lost or stolen, and that is a policy that was developed by our police officer in a town in order to assist the RCMP with the ability to retrieve bikes and to be able to dispose of them. So Counselor.
Looks like I made the motion in the committee of the hall, so I will take the motion that the town adopt policy B5 regarding lost or stolen bicycles with the amendment that the bicycles be stored for 60 days, as per discussion in the committee of the hall.
I don't know if we have to amend it since it's.
It's already amended.
It's come to us amended.
Well, I wasn't sure if that.
Yeah, it's coming to amended, so it would be appropriate not to have that. We're being in a motion.
Okay, it was already amended.
Yes, it's been amended.
All right. Any questions? Sing none, all in favor? Thank you. FCSS dossier, so I like that word, you see, French dossier. I can read that one. Okay. If you look at it, Alexis and the town put a policy together that is a framework, a reference framework, for FCSS to function in. So we need a motion to approve this dossier.
No doubt, that's my committee.
Okay. Counselor Creed is recommending that we approve this dossier. Any questions?
Maybe I'll just comment. One of the things that needed changing on this was because the FCSS now includes the villages of Glenwood and Hillspring on the committees, and in the old dossier, they were not shown as having delegates to that committee. So actually, I suggested to Marion that we need to update that.
So thank you very much for your good words. Thanks.
And if I may, just by way of discussion, how's the committee doing? Do we need to put forth some names or?
No, we haven't either. I'll actually have a report on it for the next council meeting on, we had an organizational meeting on FCSS, chosen to chairman, so I'll report.
I have a question. It says that the FCSS board sets policy and allows the staff to implement the policies. Now, when you set policy, do those policies come to this council?
I, if I understand, that maybe Mary.
Under FCSS, it's programming that is, that board functions as a regional board, and so they actually do set policy for the FCSS function only.
Only?
Only, yeah. Which is a program that approved. Our council does not approve the FCSS policy.
Right.
Okay. All right. Policy under seven C.
We'll go down.
Oh, we didn't vote, sorry. So all in favor? Thank you for keeping me alert. Seven C. I appreciate all the feedback you gave to each other and to myself regarding the letter and the communication to the public. I see some smiles. It was not without pain. But we have come to understand that maybe what was needed was to review the two policies that are already in the books. And two, policies are good, but policy without protocol does not help us to function properly. So I drafted a protocol that we need to review and be able to consent to. So we could work this way. I could go line by line, and we could agree on each line, and then move forward with a protocol that will be then all protocols. I, by the way, passed this by administration to make sure that there was no blaring gaps into what the protocols should be, and I felt it was appropriate. So here is what I proposed. When we write, we have the audience in mind, taxpayers and voters. That's who we're writing for. Second, are we are in agreement with that to begin with? Agreed? Fine. So this one, no problem. We remember that all writing can become a public document that can be cited in court. So that's something we must never, never forget. Okay? So, understood? That, okay. Third, goes along with the fact that we have strategic planning, we develop values. Anything that we do as council or as administration or staff have to be, have those values reflected in what we do. So those values are true for administration and staffs are true for us. So when we write, we have to use the same values which we agreed upon. Accountability, integrity, openness, excellence, criteria are listed in policy C15. You will see that's quite a few of them that are listed there that enhance even what has been written above that. So is that something that we can live with? Yes? I see nods. Fine. Okay. Four, choose a format of his or her writing piece without contest, meaning that if you choose a short form, that's your privilege. If you choose a long form because you're more comfortable with it, that's your privilege. Is that agreed upon?
Yes.
Fine. Thanks.
I've only been accused of being wrong when I do.
It's all right. We have, that reflects a little bit who we are, so it's fine. The fifth one is an important one because when we are taking, making decisions and reporting on those decisions, it's no longer our voice, individual voice, it is now the voice, the collective voice, united voice of the group, and that's who then we represent. It's no longer that we agree or disagree with the decision made, that has to stay away from the reporting. What is important now is that we report the decision of the committee and that we rally around it. Sometime, we will feel a little bit bruised by it, but that's the process. Okay? And this is why we sign it submitted by on behalf of mayor and council. Because if you go back to your policy C15, you will see that in media communication, I am the voice. So if you are delegated as a voice, you speak as I would speak. Okay? All right. Six, is that okay with you? Are you fine with that?
Well, just to clarify, a moment ago, you said speak as the council would speak collectively, and then just now, you said speak as I would speak as mayor.
Because I would speak on behalf of council as a collective voice.
And that's fine. Just to clarify that.
That is what is said in policy C15. Okay? Clear? Okay. So when you are reporting and doing the report, your peers, all peers, ourselves, will do exactly what we did. If there is something regarding the content that we feel should be there and is not there, it is ours to say, you know what, I really feel that should be there, and this is why. Or I feel that shouldn't be there, and this is why. And we had those conversations at the table, and they were healthy conversations, and I appreciate that very much, which helped me to draft this document. So we agreed on that? Fine. Six, we have to respect the submission dates and times for review. They are set in policy C22, and you will see that the turnaround for comments is 24 hours, is about all what you have, because administration will also provide feedback regarding the content or the facts in the content to make sure that it's fine. And then administration will push a process toward publication. Okay? No problem? Fine. Seven is, the center will respect the deadline for sending the draft to administration. So that means the writer has for duty to respect that publication date.
Is that almost repetitious, number six?
Well, not truly, because that's a final draft. The other one is the draft, the first draft. This is a final draft.
Just clarifying, I mean, when does this have to be done? When should that report be?
Okay. Go back, go back to your policy. Let's change the policy. That's a good thing to do. Go back to policy C22, and you will see that number five refers to the first draft. The first draft of a letter must be sent to the mayor, all counselors, and to the CEO or designated by 4:30 on a fourth Thursday of each month. The CEO or designate will provide fact-checking feedback to the deputy mayor by 4:30 the following Friday, which is 24th, right? Mayor and council will provide content feedback by 4:30 the following Friday. Same story, 24 hours turnaround. So then, numbers, number seven refers to the next bullet. The deputy mayor will send the final draft of the letter to the CEO by 4:30 on the following Monday. So it has Friday night, Saturday, Sunday, Monday portion of the day. Okay? So it has four days, three days, triple days to do that. Is that clear? Okay. And the eighth point here is that we will accept our communication with clerks, which is Graham, to review grammatical, syntactic, and stylish error. It's no change of content, it's just to prepare, prepare for publication in the best form that we can. Is that acceptable?
Question, how's that going to come to us? Is he going to send that back when we send in our draft with the direction?
This is not necessary at that point. At that point, it goes for publication.
Are you saying in the final draft, you will correct spelling or?
Yeah, the final draft. Once Marion has received a final draft, it will be shipped to communication. Marion?
Normally, what would happen, Counselor, is when it's submitted to me, then I review it for grammatical or punctuation changes or anything like that.
Repetition.
And then Graham just does a final review, just to make sure before it goes out to the public that we, that it's done appropriately. But it, we don't change wording, we don't, it's just if there's an and where there should be a to or something like that.
If repetition, too many repetitions, you might see a word change in order to change a repetition, but nothing more than that.
In fact, in that case, on the final draft, we wouldn't even do that.
Yeah.
It really would just be related to spelling grammar or punctuation.
Okay, so maybe we will have to even eliminate in that too much use of the same word or sentence.
Okay. We don't want to.
Okay, so we will.
We don't want to censor anything that council's saying, so it's just.
No, so.
Just readability.
Yes.
A lot of it makes us look smarter. Go ahead.
So we will, we will say grammatical and syntactic, and that's all. Stylish error, we will remove. Okay? So that will be removed from this paper. Counselor Banbury?
Mayor, we've got noted in here that the deputy mayor will do this as they sit in that position. What if that deputy mayor decides that he doesn't want to write that report?
Okay, can we carry on?
It's already in the policy.
Is it in the policy?
Yeah. Can we carry on? Just, let's look under frequency, policy C22, addressing what you are talking about. Each member of council should have an equal opportunity to report monthly. It had been decided at one of the very first meetings that we had, that only deputy mayor have this opportunity for eight months, while the mayor has none. I felt that that's not exactly correct, and should be, in terms of value, fairness and equity is lacking. So here is my proposal without having to change policy C22. Each deputy mayor may delegate, will delegate, the monthly reporting to mayor once or twice during this term. It might be more if we really cannot do it. Sufficient notice should be given to respect the date of submission to the paper. Does that make sense? So I know, for example, Counselor Barfus is very busy this month. I know that writing another report is probably not what you have in mind this month. So if it fits within your agenda, fine, do it. But if you feel it's just one too much, you're welcome to let me know, and I will help you.
I had you on my list to let you know.
But I think that would be, it will, instead of having another, another of your peers do that, I think it'd be fairer for me to do it for you. Okay? But I will follow exactly the same process as what is outlined here.
Just to address Counselor Banbury's concern, in the policy 22, says the deputy mayor will prepare the letter, and then under that, a separate bullet says a council member may volunteer to substitute as a writer for one or more months for the deputy mayor.
Which means that that counselor that you would want, it would be.
It could be, could be the mayor.
Yeah. Would be me, because I have one voice the same as you have, and in fairness, I should have a job somewhere. Okay? Is that clear enough?
But accordingly, you become the, the mouthpiece for the council.
Same, same way as you are.
No, you are the ultimate voice of council.
But I have, only have one. Okay, I understand what you're trying to say. Yes, I represent council, and it's the same thing when you write, submitted by Counselor Banbury for mayor and council, is as if you, as if you were me. Same thing. Exactly the same story. You me at that point, but you are my substitute. That's what you are, because I delegated that authority to you.
We want to make sure that our policy states that.
That the policy does state.
Personally, I think the policy is clear. Okay? So extra reporting. At time, mayor may feel they need to prepare submissions on certain item of interest to the community. Could be, for example, swimming pool, funding for that pool, could be a spring cleaner, could be other items where we need the community to rally up or be informed. And that submission will never conflict with any of yours. It would be too much on the same page. So mine will be for publication the second or third Thursday in a month. Except if I represent you.
Right. Now, what's the paper's position on that? Are you okay with?
We do have a community municipal affairs space, and so long it's not overly lengthy.
Overburdened.
They are willing to put it there. In fact, I'm quite happy to have submissions. That's all we told you about. Okay? So would you be willing to approve this protocol with the removal of stylish errors? Are we ready to have a motion to approve that?
Make that motion?
Okay, Counselor Barnes makes the motion. Any other questions that would come forward? I think we have it all pretty good. All in favor? Thank you. That should help us monthly no longer have growing things. Okay. Thank you very much.
Don't make a rash problem.
One thought, and I'm just kind of going back to the original intent of the letter that we discussed in January, and that was, you know, our ability as counselors to communicate to people that had questions without violating the communication policy. And I think what we've done today, which is fine, it's just clamped it down a little bit. So I want to just look at the title of this protocol, where it says, "Reporting on monthly council meetings," which to me makes perfect sense. What scares me a little is where it says, "Add other communication to citizens."
It's because it refers to my extra reporting.
Right. So what I'm thinking is maybe that should say, "And other council communication to citizens," so that it doesn't reflect our personal communication.
Okay. That's fine with me. I appreciate that detail. And other council communication to citizens, yeah, which could be myself or someone. Okay, perfect.
I like that.
Did you, so just for clarification, I am going to then attach the protocol to the policy.
Policy C22. Right. So the motion would be to approve that, and then for administration to attach it.
Adding, adding in the council word, that word.
Yeah, as amended.
Before we approve that, that frequency policy, C22, are we going to strike off while the mayor has none?
Oh, yeah.
Yes, of course. Good for you.
Please, yeah.
Yes, good for you. This was just a point of discussion. So each member of council should have an equal opportunity to report monthly, the rest can be taken totally out.
Right.
Okay? And then proposal.
Right. So we just use that, that little clause in the council to delegate to you?
Yeah. Don't be abusive, no.
You got a baker cookie.
Okay. Autrive me. Show me around. Thank you. All right. Did we vote on it?
No.
Not yet. All right, all in favor? Okay, thank you very much, gentlemen. Surely appreciate your cooperation. All right, seven D, town, county, regional business license agreement. As you recall, when we left Alberta Southwest, we also lost the ability to have a regional business license for all business people in town. We had delegation that came and said it would be nice if we could look at a joint agreement with the county. This is what we are proposing. So in that document, we need to first of all have reviewed the intent of that policy and the terms of it. So if we look at it, it would be first of all for each municipality to charge their own rate for resident business licenses. There would be no revenue sharing, and each municipality would have the right to amend and change their fees. Are we in need of discussing that?
Yes, we are.
Okay, councillor Banbury?
This is well and good for the county of Carstens and for the town of Carstens, but what about that business that wants to go to Fort McLeod and to Pincher Creek? It is not a regional license, and they don't have to obtain a regional license.
Okay. This is not a regional license. It is a license between the county and the town of Carstens, which is, when we did our survey, the greatest number, except for eight or nine, Jeff, if I remember?
Except for about three.
Or three, you're right. Three or four had needs to go beyond our borders. So we are here trying to satisfy the need of the majority of the business people. It's not perfect, I do agree. Okay? But it is a step in the right direction. Councillor Banbury?
Next to my question, is the county still involved with Southwest Regional?
Yes, they are.
And so if they purchase a license through the town or the county, can they purchase that regional license through the county?
They could, they could purchase, if they are, county residents can purchase a Southwest regional license. But the, there's one thing that's missing here, that we need to define what is a resident business.
Right.
If they are a town of Carstens resident business, then no, they would not be able to purchase the regional license. If they're a county resident business, yes, they could purchase the Alberta Southwest.
And there's no way we can get around that, eh?
No, the intent, the intent with this really is, going to what the mayor said, is to try to deal with, the majority of businesses that we talked to when we were looking at leaving Alberta Southwest said, if we could just do business in the county, really that's the only place. It's kind of that sharing between those two municipalities that was definitely the majority. And so this is, this is the proposed, now, we have sent this to, this draft to the county. They, it's their understanding that we would, we've sort of already agreed to this, and so we're just trying to formalize it. If the terms of this are sufficient for council, nothing glaringly wrong there, then what we'll do is bring back an amendment to our business license bylaw, so that we would recognize county resident businesses.
Okay, so we need to have a definition added to it.
Definition of what resident businesses?
Resident businesses, which would be a business. Councillor Banbury?
I'm trying to understand this. So you're saying that a resident of business in Carstens has to buy their business license through Carstens?
Correct.
And a resident in the county would have to buy their business license through the county? I mean, I'm just, was wondering, because my, my thought was that they'll go to whoever's cheapest here. But so, so basically, it has to be within, within the jurisdiction where you, where your business is located?
Is where you purchase the license?
Yeah.
And then you can, that business license is recognized in the adjacent jurisdiction.
In the adjac- adjacent jurisdiction. Okay. And then the other question I have that goes kind of along with it, is it, well, I was thinking of the other communities, and McGrath might be different, but like Glenwood and Hillspring, they're villages within the county. Do they have their own business licenses, and would they be part of this?
They come under the county.
Yeah.
No, they're.
They're in their own municipal business license. And we, we can have that conversation, but we haven't to date.
Okay, I'm, I'm wondering if that might be, if, you know, if we look at the other municipalities, you know, we're working on the shared services review right now, if that might be a conversation that we, we need to have, is it including the other villages or communities within the county as well?
Okay, we'll have that conversation.
Okay, thank you very much for that.
Question?
Councillor Barfus?
So just to clarify my understanding, too, if I had a business license here in town, I can work in the county with that license, but not in McGrath, or Hillspring, or Glenwood, in the municipality itself, but in the county at large, I could. If I wanted to do business in those communities, I would have to purchase a license within that community, right?
Correct. Okay. Okay, so you probably have read the other points here, the notification to be sent to the other municipality of the business license that was sold, so they know who has those licenses. There is revocation that has been talked about, the request for proof that a business is operating within a municipality, which is fat.
What, under what circumstances would they be revoking the business license? That would cause a problem for them to continue to work in the town versus the county, if they violate something in the county? Are you saying that they automatically violated the business protocol in town, too? If you're going to revoke, if you're going to revoke that license?
What we're saying is that the municipality that issued the license, if they revoke that license, then the, the other municipality will recognize that, and they can no longer do business there as well. So in other words, the licenses then becomes expired.
Carson County isn't revoking a license from somebody in Carson.
Right. Are you asking what could be the reason for revoking?
Yeah, kinda.
Yeah, that's what you were asking.
It's probably a serious kind of reaching.
Yeah, there's a number of reasons, but we've.
Well, most common would be not paid.
Yeah, if they haven't paid their license fee, right? We bill the license, they haven't paid it. After a certain period of time, you say, we revoke your license then, because, you know, we.
Or it could be a poor business practice, too.
Exactly, it could be something that's being investigated under criminal business practice.
All right. Who is policing all these business licenses? Because it's the last year, half, two years.
That's a very good point.
We've had a tremendous amount of businesses from out of town coming in.
Okay, I can tell you that. It's a peace officer who's gone with Alexis and has done one street after the other, and really spoke, and issued many fines.
Well, after the hailstorm, we had, Lloyd was very busy working with business licenses.
He could still be very busy.
I just want to make something clear to councillor Banbury's point. This does not preclude out-of-town businesses from buying business licenses.
Right.
Both communities should they choose to work there. So Calgary, Lethbridge contractors must buy an out-of-town, non-resident business license in the town of Carstens.
But that doesn't keep them.
And in Carson County if they choose to do that. It's only for the resident businesses.
Exactly.
So we would still have, we see those trucks with the names on the side from out of town. It doesn't matter, they must have one from us, because they're not from the county or the town.
And they would have to have one from the county, too.
If they choose to work with it.
It's definitely the county.
Lloyd is very diligent on that, and most businesses that we have issued an out-of-town license to will tell us to renew it. So a lot of those are on a renewal basis, and so they automatically have an out-of-town business license every year.
Okay. Councillor Banbury?
One more question. When, when the, we were doing the Southwest Regional Business Licenses, that was like a separate, it wasn't like a town license, it was a separate regional license.
Right, they paid extra for that.
And they paid extra for that. Now, with this, with this arrangement with the county, is it going to be every business license? Or is it going to be a separate?
No, it's every license is acknowledged.
Every, every, every business license in town will be acknowledged in the county.
Every resident business license in town will be acknowledged.
Yes, okay, no, we went through that. So every resident in the county, the business license will be recognized in town, and every business license, resident in town will be recognized in the county.
So an example would be Gibs Schaefer with his plumbing, right? So his business is actually located in the county because he works out of his home, and so he can now practice, or after this amendment's done, he can practice his business in the town of Carstens without having to purchase an additional license.
Roy Olson's for thinking.
Yes, exactly.
All right, so I think we hashed it out pretty good. It's time for a motion to accept that, with the addition that we will have a definition of resident.
We just need acceptance in principle, and then we will write the bylaw for it.
You will, fine. So councillor Banbury?
Well, we just need an acceptance in principle.
Yeah, so we, we need, well, we need to still have a sense of.
Need a motion to accept it.
Then I'll, I'll do that. I'll make that motion to accept this bylaw as, this agreement, as wrote.
It still has to pen the county as well.
So accept this agreement between town and county for business license.
As proposed.
As proposed and in principle.
Right. And our gratitude to Murray for all his work.
To Marion.
Well, not Marion.
Marion.
I guess I meant for Murray for accepting Marion.
I think it's, yeah.
Oh, it's a gentleman.
Okay, all in favor? Thank you. Okay, thank you very much.
But we appreciate Murray, too.
Rest. And tell him, the sooner he can pass it by his council, the better we will be as a business community. Okay, seven E, the park's mower. Here you have a little bit of information, in fact, you have a background there. The mower is getting old, has over five thousand hours of work in its wings, and is really in need of being retired. The fixing of that mower is now starting to be costly, and if you look at it from a financial point of view, budget point of view, there is a piece of equipment that is no longer at sixty thousand dollars, it's now eighty thousand dollars. So here, administration has proposed the difference, the twenty thousand dollars that we have in this way. Five thousand dollar would be a credit as a trade-in, and we still need seven thousand nine hundred sixteen dollars, as you can see. There's a difference in price of twelve thousand nine hundred sixteen dollars, truly. So that's really the exact figure. Now, there are three solutions. Can you give me a chance? The first solution is to look at the capitalization policy for 2014 and take the difference from there. But the inconvenience is that if we have an emergency, it puts us short of a thousand dollars, which I do not think is a very good solution. We need that extra money for, in case of. The second solution is to not purchase it this year, purchase it next year, but with implication that time passes by costs money, which means with the difference in the dollar, we might pay significantly more money. Maybe, again, not the best solution. The third solution is, for me, the preferred solution, and I'm going to explain why. There is eighty thousand dollars in a parks capital budget, sixty thousand dollars for the mower, twenty thousand dollars for the totlot upgrade. Let me talk about the totlot upgrade policies that we have in town. It has been decided that every couple years, we upgrade a totlot. Not that they are falling in disrepair, this one that was targeted was a south totlot. It is in good condition still, but it's aging, it's showing its age.
Which one is it?
The south totlot.
South, cobblestone.
Just south of the cobblestone.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Okay, that little, that little corner, it's metal, metal thing. So it's still in good repair. It can last another year. But here is the little bit of discussion we need to have. We wanted to upgrade it at the cost of forty thousand dollars. Twenty thousand dollars was going to be a grant written by the Lions Club. Twenty thousand dollars was a matching, oh, the Kingsman, sorry, the Kingsman, and twenty thousand dollars was a matching grant, portion of the town. So we can push that purchase for a year, 2015, or we can even start to purchase some of the equipment this year, not for the total amount. So to me, it is the preferred solution. It doesn't change anything, it doesn't require extra money, the money's there. We reserve the twelve thousand dollars towards the totlot, and we top it up the year after. Meanwhile, we can reserve that whole money for 2015, or we can use that money to start buying the equipment and putting it up together with labor costs in 2015. I think that's a preferred solution. Councillor Banbury?
Mayor, this is a three-winged mower.
Yes.
What advantage, what advantage would we have of subcontracting that mowing out, that particular mower?
Okay, that's a good question for administration.
I've, from our previous conversation on that, we've, I've given direction for that to take place. We've been accumulating our costs. The difficulty is trying to establish what would be a contracted cost without going to tender on it. And so Jeff is going to, if he hasn't already, contacted a couple of contractors that we're aware of in the area to see if they'll give us an estimate once we have the inventory. You know, we can give them a, a list of the inventory and the expectation, but we don't have those costs yet, council.
Okay, so here is something we, we can do. We can table this until we have further information from administration.
This one has a question.
Or we can, in principle, approve one of those three solutions.
I, I just have one comment to that. The price is being held for us till tomorrow. It's, they're, I'm not sure that the price will be the same after tomorrow. They said that they.
The price on the mower?
Yes. The Canadian dollar is.
It's fluctuating too much.
Yeah, and the original quote they gave us was on a, on a display model, I guess, and so it was cheaper than what it, than the model was, and somebody picked it up.
Okay, councillor Banbury?
At eighty thousand dollars, I don't care if they're holding that price or not till tomorrow. This is coming out of the States, probably. What is matter with our local suppliers?
The supplier, we buy it in Canada, but the suppliers in the States.
Well, what's matter with the big farm equipment machinery, like John Deere in Lethbridge? They're big, yeah, western, western tractor, can't they supply a three-wing mower? Or does the city of Lethbridge and city Calgary buy their mower?
Randy's got quotes from a couple of different suppliers, yeah.
Well, I think that we're being held, held a ransom for that price for tomorrow morning. You know, you guys either make a decision or your price is going up, and I don't, I don't agree with that.
Sorry, councillor, I wouldn't say that we are being held ransom, okay? They gave us a price quote, and I told them that it was outside of our budget, and, and They gave us a price quote, and I told them that it was outside of our budget, and, and we couldn't make that decision until it came to council. They just explained that with the prices, with the dollar going up, or down, I guess, our dollar going down, that it's having an impact on those prices. And so, I said, "Well, I can't take it to council until the 11th." They said they would hold it till the 12th. That's why we gave you options as to whether we buy it now or we put off the purchase. But one of the risks we run by putting the purchase off till next year is that the price could be...
So, so in April, when the dollar goes up again, then we still have the $80,000 mower.
I wouldn't...
Well...
But that's just one of the options, and I understand what you're saying.
Okay.
I think it's not that they're holding us ransom, though. They're in a position where a decision has to be made because they can't hold the price for it.
Okay, let's do a tour of the table and try to get everybody's voice. Councilor Ballfus?
I, I know that, right now, the US has got a policy coming in which a lot of the countries around the world are not happy with. And it's now, they're saying, predicting that the US dollar is going to drop, or is going to go up again. And I'm kind of leaning towards what Councilor Bangery is saying too, and we, we have to be very careful with our money. And I, I think, I mean, even at today's dollar, that seems like an awful lot of money more. You know, it's kind of like they're speculating in what it's going to cost down the road. And, and I, I don't, I just don't think that that's, I think we need to continue to look.
Okay.
That's just my feeling.
I'm just going to give you a little bit of further information. If you notice, Marion has the option to make a decision within $10,000. Here we're talking $7,000. Marion graciously brought that to council to hear our voice. She could have made a decision. She had the power and the policy to do so. So, this is what we are discussing to add to the conversation, and I thought Marion was very wise to do that. It's important that we hear the voices. But you have to remember also that she had the power to, you know, take an administrative...
Yeah, and if, if I might to that, one of the reasons that I felt it was important for council to discuss this is, is...
Exactly what Councilor Bangery was saying.
Because there has been some previous discussion as to whether we should contract out those services.
Correct.
I'm not confident that that will come in cheaper, but a large capital expenditure like this obviously has an impact. But the reason we have this is because, very similar to other circumstances that we're trying to overcome, is we have tried to do the best we can with the least we can. And this mower that we're replacing has 5,300 hours on it. I was surprised they were going to give us 5,000 for it. It is, it's just, it's lived its life and then another one.
They're, they're not going to be selling it for 5,000.
Yeah, so, you know, that's, I guess, we put ourselves in a circumstance when we're not replacing capital items on a, on a regular basis, because we do get to a point where it starts costing us more than, than it does to Jeff.
And then, Councilor Bangery?
One point, just so we're on the same page, and maybe just from a couple of things I'm hearing, the difference in price from 60 to the 72 has nothing to do with the dollar. It has to do with, when Randy got quotes last year, they quoted him a floor model, which then, when he was ready to purchase, it was no longer there. So, now that one was gone, and he wasn't aware that that was a one unit, one time he asked for a quote on the three-wing, they gave him a quote, we budgeted for it, and it was for a, a demo. And so, the difference has nothing to do with the dollar at this point. They're just saying that we can't hold it to the penny for fear of upward pressure on the pricing, long-term.
Well, and they, yeah, and they're already seeing upward pressure on the pricing. So, their supplier, this is Oak Creek in Calgary that we buy it from, their supplier's price has already gone up. But they're saying, "We won't, if we don't sell you this one, then your price will be higher," right?
I just wanted to be clear that that difference that we're looking at today has, doesn't have anything to do with that. It was different model.
It was floor model versus, we have to get to the model.
And, and one other thing, just, we found it twice this year. We've had two different times where our guys have got quotes in October, November, and because we can't purchase anything till budget approval, the, some of those opportunities do leave. We don't have the flexibility of the private sector to write the check today, because that's what they wanted to get while we're trying to budget in that previous year. So, that's caught us a couple of times. This is one of those times, I wish it didn't. I wish we had the whole 72 back in October.
Yeah. Councilor Creed?
Okay, just a couple of questions. I guess, one, one thing is that, I think I'm seeing that this is just coming up new, that you've done your due diligence. This is what I want to, you know, understand. And the other thing I see is that the FERC sixty's coming from MSI funding, so, I mean, if we don't purchase it, where is that MSI funding going to go to? I mean, it's...
Stay and reserve it.
Yeah, we could reserve the grant funding to go to a purchase next year if the decision was made to purchase next year.
Okay.
Yeah.
Sorry.
My feeling, I mean, if I was in the business, I would want to get the mower.
Okay, I'm going to give a chance to Councilor Ballfus to speak first, if you don't mind, Councilor Bangery?
No, that's, that's fine.
Go ahead.
My, my bias is towards doing exactly what Jeff was suggesting there, is that, or that you suggested earlier with option three. I don't think that trying to predict where the dollar's going to be at in another six months or a year is anything that's going to benefit us. It could be higher, it could be lower, and anyway, it tells you the whole different. And given that the big price difference isn't even reflected from a, a dollar difference, what we're talking about here is we missed an opportunity for a really good deal. That's gone.
Yeah, and that's a fact.
So, now, the only, the only option I see as the alternative is if we were going to be looking at contracting that out, then we have a mower that maybe we don't need at that point. I'm guessing that there's probably a market that that could be sold off at a fairly decent price if that was the decision that we went on. I, I favor option number three.
Okay, Councilor Bangery?
These prices were obtained when, last October, November?
Yeah, we would have got those prices in about October when we're finalizing budget, yeah.
I, I, I still have a gut feeling that we need to go shopping again. And, and just because Oak Creek is, is good, and it's a good avenue, I think we need to shop around.
I read it. We have multiple quotes on comparable models. We, we talked to different manufacturers and received quotes from multiple manufacturers.
These guys are the lowest then, as you're saying?
This four, the, the width of the mower, all things being equally, yeah, this was within, the next one was 75.5, and I don't remember another, but, yeah, this was.
Okay, administration could maybe explain to council why a three-wing mower?
Yes.
What's the capacity that a two-wing mower doesn't have?
Sure. It, it's simply time for covering large areas, particularly when we took on the soccer park. That's when we took the old, well, the mower we have now from the golf course, because we inherited those eight acres of, of soccer park, and it's just, we, our other mowers are, you know, the three-foot deck or the four-foot deck.
One, this one mower will do the job of two mowers, so it's a personality shoot to start with. But this, this mower will do the soccer park, Redford Park, the Town Square, Lions Park, and the reunion center is, and so, for those five parks alone, it would, we would have two people for the same length of time, I guess is, or double the time.
Okay, the, the only controversy then that is left to really talk about is purchasing versus renting.
Versus a lease?
Or leasing, or contracting.
The lease, the problem with the lease is that the interest rate you pay on a lease is substantial. And if, if we were in a position where we had absolutely no money, it would, then I think that's, that's maybe an option. But as Councilor Creed pointed out, we have 60,000 of this as being paid by grant. So, obviously, the grant can't go to a lease payment, so it changes the dynamic of that.
Okay, Councilor Bangery, and then we have to make a decision.
Have we looked at alternate mowers? Now, if we buy a mower, that's all we've got, is a mower. Have we looked at a pole-type mower behind a small tractor? Then you have a tractor that could be utilized for something else in the wintertime, like snow removal or sidewalk cleaning or something like that. And you have a flame mower and a trimming mower, you know, such as that kind of stuff.
And parks.
And Councilor Bangery, and I don't mean to be whatever, I've, I've talked to Randy for the price of these mowers, I told him I'd buy him a couple of trucks and an army of small lawnmowers for what these things cost. I mean, it is, it's painful, what they charge for these. We bought a tandem truck last year for less than this mower. So, yeah, I, I agree that, so, we got multiple quotes to see if that was reasonable for that type of piece of equipment. We can go down to Walker mowers, which is the other ones we have now, the smaller ones. They're about 55 to go down to the smaller width and the smaller capacity. And we do have a tractor, like a big tire tractor, that we use for brush mowing and rough, you know, the rougher stuff.
The flame mowing stuff.
Yeah, yeah, the rougher terrain stuff. But when it comes to the manicure-ing of the ballparks and the soccer parks specifically, that's what these are, are made for. And it is an inferior product with inferior...
Result.
Yeah, with inferior result. They, they work great in their capacity. I guess, did we look at every alternative out there? No, we can't tell you that we did. We, we got quotes on different levels of mowers from different manufacturers, is what we done.
Okay, we need to really make a decision. Are we purchasing, or we don't? So, is anybody willing to make a motion to purchase that piece of equipment according to scenario number three? We're only talking of a difference of $7,916, that's all what we're talking about. Yes, I have your concern in mind regarding, could we get it cheaper if we were hiring a contractor? So, that is an option. Right now, we have a time limit on a purchase of an equipment that is an asset, allows us to renew our asset, improve our assets. So, that is not a loss kind of purchase. It improves our asset situation. Okay, one more time around, and then we'll make a decision.
I was gonna, I was gonna go ahead and make the motion to go with option three, just because, I mean, you know, the decision was made, I mean, I don't want to go back and rehash the decision. All we've got to do is kind of up, up the ante a little bit to cover the decision that was already made. And, and I, I feel it's, it's counterproductive to go back and try to, to, you know, micromanage, you know, the parks and the recreation department and everything that's already been decided. So, I will make that motion, and then if you want to go ahead and have a discussion.
One more round of questions or discussions, and...
If I can just add to that, because that's a motion on the table. One of the things we've talked about administratively with the tot lot moving to 2015, we can get the grant application, those go on, you know, certain intakes, right? So, if we get the grant application in, we will know in the fall whether we've been approved for it, and then we can start immediately into 2015. Instead of waiting for the grant to be approved before we can start the project. So, it kind of puts us one step ahead with that project as well, which could be beneficial for us.
Okay. And, Councilor Beale, if you want to...
Well, I've just heard from a couple of people that they want to see that south tot lot get the long slide again. So, as long as that's on the table, we're good to go.
Okay, Councilor Ballfus?
I'm fine, I sat back now with, and I can see the situation.
Councilor Bangery?
I, I still got real objections to buying an $80,000 mower. If, if we turned around and, and we bought a mower for the, for the soccer field and said to them, "There's your mower, get somebody to run it and mow your lawn."
Okay, we still need one to mow the other parks.
But we need a, a big three-wing mower, and that's, it's just...
All right, so, you know, we, we might not always agree on everything, and that's all right. So, we have a motion on the table, we will call for vote. All in favor? Okay, and against? Okay, thank you very much. All right. Thank you for your discussion, it's very healthy to discuss things. Financial report is there for your information, unless you have some question for administration, we may move on. Okay, so that is just for your information.
Is it just for information? We need a motion on it to approve it.
No, you missed two, the two additions to the agenda.
Oh, so, sorry. Yes, under 7F, we have a request in a letter that is on your desk regarding the need to have a delegate to sit on the SVU committee. So, is there somebody who feels so inclined? I would suggest that that is part of an economic development initiative. Therefore, Councilor Ballfus, I do not know if you would agree to sit on this committee.
Actually, I've, I've been working with them already.
Okay, so it's a natural fit. Thank you very much. Okay?
That's not going to be a problem for you, then, no?
Okay, the next one, and you don't have a paper, I have a motion to approve, to appoint a Councilor Ballfus.
I'll make that motion.
Councilor Bangery has made that motion? Thank you very much.
I may not thank you.
All in favor? Thank you very much. Okay, thank you for keeping me straight there. 7G, interagency request for a member to sit on their committee. Their committee meets once per month, the second Tuesday, from 12 to 1. It is a liaison role, more or less. FCSS is there, represented by Alexis. No, and, and this is why I'm telling you, I just attended, I just attended their meeting today, and they requested that we have a sitting member of council at the table. Marion said wisely enough that we have FCSS, Alexis, that represent the town and FCSS. They invited me today for discussion, to listen to what's going on. Would really love to have from time to time some presentation, as we would do next month regarding EMS, they requested that. So, I do not know if this council feels that another appointee's in demand. I said I wouldn't mind going and sit there, but Marion wisely warned us that when you start to show your face at something, people expect your face to be there. So, there is with Eminem. I can also, also see the wisdom of being there to understand the, all the agency that are represented and what they're doing. To me, it's a bit of an eye-opener, curiosity killed the cat, yes. But is there anybody, what's your feeling regarding that interagency?
What is the inter-agency committee, yeah, what, what are they, what are they doing?
Okay. They are represented by the library, by the AHS Addictions and Mental Health, the LDS West State and, and Cardston State, the AHS Mental Health. There is also Training Incorporated, that is in our town, Global Training that is there. And they have about fifty-six agencies represented there.
Adult learning.
Yes, I mean, they don't have them all there.
What is it that they are trying to accomplish?
That is the very good question. They would like the town to be there, to be aware of all what's going on in a community through the eyes and voice of those agencies. At this time, they did not give us a mandate except to report on certain item that might come from those agencies. So Marion wisely suggested that maybe we should be there when they need us to report on something specific that we would be glad to report. Marion?
My understanding of the intent of the interagency meeting is simply to get agencies together that would be involved in any kind of social interaction in the community or social service interaction. And that's why FCSS is a part of that. And it has been ongoing for a number of years. But it really is intended to be more of an awareness and interaction so one agency can maybe help another in certain circumstances. We do have a representative at the table being our FCSS coordinator. But they have asked me to come a couple of different times just to report on different things. They wanted a presentation last year on our emergency response plan. So I went and presented that and they've asked for that again this, this year. So that was my recommendation to the mayor is maybe we can go more informally when something is, there's something more they'd like reported.
I think that's what I would be in support of is more of an informal thing.
There might be another way that could, this could be done as well as maybe have someone from the interagency, maybe our FCSS director, reporting to a committee of the whole meeting and reporting on the, on the interagency as well.
Well, if you're interested, I'm sure they would be willing to send you a copy of their minutes every month. We get them and so we could forward them on to you and that would keep you up to date on kind of what's being discussed there.
That would be better. You know, and if they, if they want us to come and, you know...
Okay, Councilor, Councilor Bangle?
I'm in agreeance with having the minutes sent to me. And then, and then if we, if we peruse them and see that we need to, maybe I'd have them come and speak to us at the CCW, great.
Okay, that is something administration can...
I can't help but question as I hear this. It sounds similar to that stakeholders organization we were talking about.
Well, exactly.
And I'm wondering with a couple more representatives from some of the leagues and such, this, this would be there, this would be that.
This really is the focus or the previous focus, the intent of the organization, I believe, is, is more on the social services side of things. And that's why the stakes are involved. It's actually the release society presidents that are there as representatives. It really is a social service sort of.
I, I had the chance to talk to them about an item that is in our correspondence and I will address that in a minute. And all of that came something good. I'm meeting tomorrow here at the state center, at the civic center to try to formalize an application for what we're going to talk about. So I think I was at an appropriate time. They had questions regarding EMS that I could answer and that led to the requesting of a presentation. So that was good. So I could see today was a useful day for me to be there.
Yeah, and just, just I guess is a bit of a concern that I would have is, is if we do start to attend on a regular basis, it may take the focus away from what the real intent of that, of that meeting is. If we, if, if we're there and they're dealing with a lot of questions about other town-related matters that aren't necessarily related to what they're focused on.
I really think what would be important then is to really hear what their mandate really is and if their mandate is still the same or if they intend to expand their mandate and therefore our input is a welcome input. I'd like to know what place where you is in that conversation. Okay? Thank you. All right, let's go to committee and others.
Mayor, can we just go back to number eight for just a second?
Financial report? Okay, go ahead.
This is talking about the, our long-term investments.
Yes.
And I just had a question for administration.
Okay, go ahead.
They talked about the carrying amount, you know, versus the current value and depending on like bond premium discount. And I just had the question, is where we have the, the current value amount being less than the, the carrying amount? What does that reflect exactly? You know, I mean, we should be making interest, right?
I should let Councilor Barfus answer that.
You can probably explain that, yeah.
But, but basically what happens with that is, is we will buy a bond that is, that is at a higher rate, but we take it at a discounted rate because we're taking it, we're not taking it over, say, the twenty-year, we're taking it over five years or something. So it discounts it down to a different rate.
And it doesn't mature until the date?
Exactly.
Dispute.
Yeah. Is that a, is that a layman's explanation?
That's as good as it, that's a great explanation.
That's, that's kind of what I, what I thought. But over, over the long term, we are going to make money.
Yes, you will realize your four-and-a-half percent or whatever.
When you're holding to maturity, the rest of it doesn't matter.
It doesn't matter, okay.
And lots of times we'll, these will get traded out for other bonds that are paying a different, a higher percentage or whatever. So we, we buy and sell these a bit.
Okay. When, when administration makes a presentation out of financial and about it, maybe you can take a little bit of time to explain a little bit how it works a little bit more in depth if you want to.
Okay, I'll add that to it.
And then a little bit about bond discount.
So, no, I don't know if I want to get into how bonds work. It might be, I mean, you can, you can...
Just as long as you don't involve an ACP.
You can call Councilor Barfus, he can do that portion of the presentation on that and, and give us a basic example and so we can follow through. Thank you for asking those questions because that's the way we learn. Okay? Anything about the motion list today?
Couple of questions.
Councilor Pivoy?
Right, the top of the motion list is talking about the inputting from, from the healthcare.
Right.
And I'm just wondering if, if we've had any, any input back yet from, from our local...
We gave them up to the thirty in the...
February, but I haven't heard anything back from them, no.
Yeah. I don't think that would happen so fast. Anything else regarding that list?
Uh, we'll just, we were...
Councilor Pivoy?
Yeah, on the fluoride that we were investigating, that's still coming to committee the whole next month, is that?
We have been in contact with Justine and so we're arranging those presentations as we speak. We've spoken to some dentists and we're just starting to make those contacts and...
Yeah, we need to have professionals on both sides of the equation. All right? So we're good?
Just one other question.
Councilor Pivoy?
This is probably going to the bottom of the list or close, but anyway. I mean, we talked about the presentations from Alberta Southwest or Atlantans and then we have the other, or possibility that if we have the Mormon Trail group, that we might join as, as a group rather than, you know, individually. So I'm just wondering where, where we stand on that at this moment.
Councilor Pivoy, we meeting tomorrow.
Yeah, the terms of reference for the Mormon Trail, setting more formal agreement there is on the agenda for the mayor's meeting tomorrow.
Thank you.
Yes. Thank you. Well, that's good, you're on the ball. All right. Now, let's go, any questions for administration at this point?
Uh, one more issue there and I know we're still, you know, in talks there, but are we gonna put together a carpool for February twenty-eighth?
Okay, that's a good question.
That's the MGA review line.
Maybe we can do that after the meeting.
Yeah, that's up to council to, I won't be attending now because I...
After next, next council, oh, we have one more council meeting before.
At the next council meeting. Marion?
Maybe just while we're on that subject, just take a second to talk about tomorrow night times to leave.
Okay. Tomorrow night, it appears that Councilor Bangle is going to be our chauffeur. Marion and Councilor Barfus need to leave later on because they have a meeting fairly late on the waste authority grant application. And so, Councilor Bangle, would you want to...
I'll pick, I'll pick up you and Councilor Pivoy. And then we're gonna meet, Councilor, no, I'm gonna pick up Councilor Pivoy.
You can, or I could, or I could drive to Fort McLeod and leave my car.
Well, that leaves you two vehicles to drive home with. And if, if it's all right with everybody that's riding home, that'd be the four of us, can we detour through Lethbridge and drop Councilor Pivoy off?
As long as nobody has a problem with that, I'm okay. But I don't want, I don't want to cause hardship on anybody.
If, if Mayor and Councilor Pivoy...
I just have Ex-Society at seven. Are we back by seven? Is that...
You are back by seven.
Yeah. Okay, no problem.
Yeah, I have a meeting. I will give you my credit cards so that you can tonight leave it. Well, thank you.
Have you got two of them?
Aren't you confident that you can be back to Cartson by seven with, with, with taking these through Lethbridge?
Oh, yeah. If we leave at three o'clock in the afternoon, because usually that last hour is, is a social event.
Okay. And if you get up by three, you miss all the really heavy traffic.
Exactly.
Yeah, normally that's what we try to do in a bathroom.
Yeah.
Okay?
So I'll pick, I'll pick you up top of the hill.
Yep, I'll walk up.
Let's move on with correspondence. The first item of correspondence is from Alberta Transportation. It is about Travis. Travis is a non-cost to the municipality program. It's called Transportation Routing and Vehicle Information System, which means that businesses that deal with oversized cargo will be able to have a one-stop shop to purchase their licenses, their permits. And so to my point of view, we have at least one business in town that has large cargo like that that could benefit from it. It doesn't cost nothing to the town. And so I would suggest that we have a motion to approve the agreement to enter, a motion to enter into an agreement with Alberta Transportation for the Travis program.
So this is for the issuing of permits, correct?
Yeah, online. It'll be online.
Yep, okay.
Councilor Barfus?
I'll make that motion.
You're making that motion? Fine. Any questions? I mean, it's really straightforward, it's to the benefits of those businesses.
Yeah.
Okay?
They get their permits here instead of...
Right. All in favor? Thank you. Okay, the next one is Alberta Human Services. As you may have read, there is a new way to do business. Alberta Human Service has now an act that's called the Building Families and Community Act that has been approved on December eleven, two thousand thirteen. And as you can read through your document, they are interested in having regional community engagement, family and community engagement councils to be able to serve the needs of the community better, to identify social issue, build relationship, involve community partners, et cetera. What they are requiring is to have people name put forward to sit on those committees. The invitation is even for myself too. The only thing that I found disturbing is they do not tell you how often they meet, nor where do they meet. They only tells you that you will be paid for your efforts and all your expenses paid. So I do not know, I, I have received from the interagency one name and I will meet that person tomorrow, see what we can do if we have in fact even a form, an application.
Yeah. I just wanted to point out, this isn't a nomination process, it's an application process.
Right.
So the applicant has to be...
Has to apply.
Right.
So anybody that's interested?
Yeah. Councilor Bangle?
I'll let my name stand for an application process. If we get enough information to know what's happening and where it's gonna be and all this kind of stuff, we need to have that. If Graham can access this, this, uh, Human Services, Alberta Human Services.
I am a little surprised that they gave us a deadline of February fourteen with so little information. I was a little bit perturbed.
Well, I think, I think it's probably extended to March, isn't it, Graham?
I think that the individual, if you're interested in applying, I think you should, you should go on to that application process and it should give you some further information there. Because we wouldn't be applying on your behalf. You would be applying because you, I'm sure you have to...
Write resume.
Somewhat of a resume together to show that you have...
Yeah. There are certain, there are certain competencies, as you can see, that are required for that. But elected officials are definitely part of what they're looking for. Councilor Pivoy?
Yeah, so just to understand, are they looking for one from Cartson or are they looking for multiple?
They're, they're looking for application for, from all communities involved in that process, which includes us.
So I'm just thinking, this sounds a lot like what the interagency group is trying to accomplish.
That's what she...
So I just think there's some overlap there.
I don't think that it's limited to one application per community.
No.
Because anyone that has interest should apply.
Yeah. They will then man the different, different box from those names that are submitted. So it's in our interest to submit. Okay?
So I, I guess what I'm asking is, should we make them aware of the need to get applications in, have as many of them that would be interested submit applications?
If you know of individuals that fit that profile, I would suggest that you contact them personally and just say, hey, there's an opportunity.
This is why I took the opportunity to speak at the interagency. It was right, the right place and I had an incredible...
So we're not planning to take any action as a council along this line? We're just saying, hey, any individuals that need to put in an application, do so?
It is, the more you understand relationship with Aboriginal people, the better it will be. It's what they can express in there. Okay, Alberta Transportation.
Thanks for your concerns. Thanks for meeting me with, with my department that I wasn't ahead of.
Actually, actually, we have sent a draft, drawing to them for feedback and they've assured us they will get back to us and that was about three weeks ago. That we heard that, at least three weeks.
Given that this letter is from the AUMA.
Yeah.
That'll give you kind of a timeframe of where, where he's at.
Yeah. But, but they do have a draft submission from us on the design of the road.
They haven't shut the door.
No, that's what I get out of it too, but...
They haven't given us any money to move along with our project with, with the highway drive, but whatever. I wish, I wish they would understand how important it is for us to have access to the, to the highway. All right, let's move on to the last item, Alberta Municipal Affairs. As you can see here again is, thank you, but no thank you. So when I was at the mayor's end, we, Emily Weddick was there and says, well, they are looking at a variety of options. The town approved, proposed one option. Emily Weddick said there are definitely more than one options they are looking at. And Emily... And Emily Bigman also said that it is very much one item that are still pushing forward to benefit municipalities and their sustainability problem.
Just in addition to that, one of the concerns that I have is that, that we were told that there would be some revamping of the grants in December, should be an announcement, we haven't heard that yet. I anticipate by the end of March or when budget comes out again from the province, that probably some of these announcements will be made. And there is potential that that could have an impact on our budget, so just so-
Absolutely.
And, and we wish for the best, knowing that the worst could happen, so.
So are we, now that, I mean, it's very evident that this is the direction they're going, do we, are we becoming experts on the regional collaboration grant application process or?
Well, we currently have about $350,000 in RCP grant just for this year that we're working on.
That's approved or applied for?
That's already been approved.
Approved.
The town has become quite aggressive.
We're applying for $250,000.
Applying quite a bit more right now.
We, we have plans, we're gonna take to a committee meeting for a couple more options. So we're trying to find ways to make it happen.
I really appreciate administration for taking opportunities and being aggressively engaged in trying to get the town as much money as we can get, which is a great stuff because we don't know what its future is made of. So we need a motion to adjourn. Councillor Balfour, thank you.
I like to make.
Thank you for your good work, to all of you.
I just hope now we need to work the system and collaborate.
Appreciate that, and thank you to the media. You have an early night tonight.
I have concerns.